I'm going to order, our first item we have is being used as special meeting and we're going to have a public hearing related to the property tax rates for fiscal year 2019 through 2020. So I've called this meeting to order and I'm going to open the floor for our public hearing. And so of course at our last meeting, we had a reading of the proposed tax rates and as Tracy explained to us, meeting several weeks back, we're not actually changing the tax rates, but because we're going to be bringing in additional revenue into the city by way of new development and new properties within the city, since we are having increased revenue to the city, even though we're not having an increase rate, we're required to have a public hearing. So I'm going to open the floor for any comments. I don't think there usually are, just a laugh in case.
This additional income that's brought in via the tax rate is the same because of additional businesses and additional appraisals from PPA.
Correct. Or new properties that have been built or improved upon. So right, councilman, so obviously no one's, if your property value has increased, obviously then your tax rate would increase by way of that, but otherwise all things being equal, no one's tax liability to the city will increase as a public hearing.
Your tax rate will change.
Correct.
But your assessment, your price, your price, your tax might change, but your tax rate will not change.
Correct. Seeing no comment, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
I don't think we had to vote on it, motion to adjourn, did we?
I think we did.
Yeah, we did, we did, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned until six o'clock. We meet the time, the last time it was two minutes.
Wouldn't you wish all public meetings were like this?
Absolutely.
I'm glad you came here and you all let us through.
You're outside.
Thank you.
Have no luck.
I'm going to call this meeting to order and open up the floor for a nomination for a presiding officer over the meeting.
If I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion that Councilman Bill Shekels preside over the meeting, in absence of the mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Audrey. Thank you of council members for entrusting me with this major job that we have here for this meeting. We just have a regular cast of characters here. I don't see that many other people here, but the husband, our husband, just. First order of business, under tab number three, the surplus, sale of surplus real property, bid tab there. Greg, you had something to do with that, you want to kind of lighten us on that?
It's just the bid, you guys have already approved the lot down there off the golden foot, like a surplus property and this bid tab is, you know, they advertised on August the 25th to accept bids for that lot and these are the two bids that they got in for. And they're just asking that you, I'm sure they accept the bid, the lowest bid on that.
The highest.
The highest bid on that, I'm sorry.
And I think that's actually what we're required to take, the highest bid for real property.
Is everybody familiar with where this piece of property is? This is a property across from Billy Bob's shop that Jerry Boone uses a part a lot for quite some time.
Well, if everybody's on agreement, would someone like to make the motion to approve the bid of Jerry Boone, Boone's aviation, to purchase this, the sale of the surplus property?
So moved.
Motion made.
For $31,001.
No. Motion made by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hibs. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like side, thank you. Okay. The second, under the bid tab, we have a request from Horizon Engineering that there's a water line extension that's going to be out on Bennett Lane, part of the Brothers Farm Agribusiness Division that wanted to, with their necessary work and, and they want us to, ask us to extend, to take into, to our system, the water line extension they're, they're going to use out there on the Brothers Farm, on Bennett Lane. Just for your, Greg, who can move that to?
I am not sure.
Well, anyway, they, they want to do a water line extension out there on Brothers Lane and if they meet all the regular qualifications it takes to fit into our system, then I don't think we'd have a problem accepting it into our system if they meet all the specifications. So if someone would like to make a motion that we accept the water main extension off Bennett Lane, if they follow the normal qualifications that fit into our system, then we could approve it.
I'll make that motion, maybe subject to the approval of Jessica, our city engineer.
Motion made by Councilman Hart to accept the water main extension off Bennett Lane with the necessary requirements that the city holds. You want to get a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Councilman Buckman. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like side. Under this correspondence, you all saw we had, we approved a petting zoo permit because of special condition of livestock in the city. Greg, did you, did we ever get any more response from Randy about where they want to put this petting zoo?
I have not. So I talked to, I called Randy after seeing the permit, the request for the permit for the petting zoo, and wanted to know where she intends on putting it for the crafts fair. She is undecided at this point where she wants to put it. I think she's leaning towards putting it somewhere over there at the back of City Hall where they have all those jumpy, bouncy times, those castles, jumpy houses for the kids. She was considering out in front of Spaulding Hall, but I, I mean, even after talking to her, I don't think Spaulding Hall may not want those animals on their lawn. So I think she may be intending to, right now, I think the intent is to put it out there behind City Hall where all the jumpy houses are at, but that's not definite yet. She's just asking for the permit and she'll figure out where she's going to put it after that.
Well, do you, do you want to, do you all think it'd be a good idea to approve this without knowing exactly where it is? I mean, we still got time.
We can approve it with the condition that the location is approved by the mayor or Greg, or just so we don't hold her up and she can get it all lined out, get her animals lined out.
Well, Greg and I talked about this yesterday when I saw it on the thing and it's on the agenda, but that was my, that would have been my suggestion to put it up there where the kids are, because that's who's actually going to be food with the animals. It's out of place. But if you, if you want to make a motion, it's okay with everyone else unless they want to discuss it anymore. If you want to make a motion that we approve this petting zoo permit for needing approval of the city's hat, then.
As far as location.
As far as location, where it needs to be.
Since it's the first time that we've clouded and did that, is there any other type of special liability except the city can incur? I know this is just a petting zoo.
So I think, I believe to get the permit, they had to show proof of insurance, which Randy had indicated they did have liability insurance should a farm animal bite a child, I suppose. So they have sufficient insurance, but the mayor felt comfortable, I guess, that recommending the permit.
And the crafts fair themselves kind of carried insurance.
Had insurance, yeah.
Carrying insurance as well.
So I don't think that would be a liability concern for us.
You have other comments or questions or, okay, Councilwoman Hart, you want to make that in form of a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the permit for the arts and crafts fair for how to have their petting zoo, with the location of the petting zoo to be subject to staff approval.
Okay, that's the motion made by Councilman Hart to approve the petting zoo with the stipulations of staff approval. And then second.
Second.
Councilman Buckman, no further questions? If special having none. Yes, second, Councilman Williams.
Unless I misheard, I think you said accept, did you mean approve? That's, did I hear it incorrectly?
Location would be staff approved.
Oh, okay.
In other words, they can work with Randy and determine if that's the location for them.
Okay, thank you. No other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like side. Okay. We have the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 27. At your disposal, there's no additions, deletions, or corrections, entertain a motion to approve it by unanimous consent. You don't need motion to approve.
If there's no addition, deletion, or correction.
Okay, under ordinances, okay. We have, we have two second readings. One is on the supplement to the code of ordinances, where the ordinances we've had the last couple of years have been classified into our big legal handbook. We have to do this every so often, four or five years we have to do this. Someone would like to entertain the ordinance number B 2019-11 and have our city attorney read it.
An introduction, it needs an introduction?
Yes.
Okay, if I may, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2019-11, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Barstown and ask our city attorney to read the summary.
It's an ordinance in full. But it is short.
Short, sorry, the short ordinance.
Ordinance number B 2019-11, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Barstown, Kentucky. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the 2019 S-22 supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Barstown, Kentucky, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement to the code of ordinances of this municipality. And whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the code of ordinances which are based on or make references to sections of the Kentucky revised statutes. And whereas, whereas it is the intent of the council to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Barstown, section one, that the 2019 S-22 supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Barstown, Kentucky, as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati and as attached hereto, be and the same is hereby adopted by reference as it is set out in its entirety. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage approval and publication as required by law.
This is, this is the second reading and it would have to be approved by an individual vote. No further questions or anything, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number B 2019-11, starting with the council.
So moved. But you got a frozen second.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Trying to break the record. Motion made by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Donald. This will take an individual vote, we'll start with Councilman Hughes.
Aye.
Motion carried six zero. Okay, now we have the artist number B 2019-12, the property tax ordinance that needs to be read on second, second, second reading. Would you like to, would someone like to introduce that? Councilman Hughes, would you like to introduce that?
Councilman Shekels, if I may be in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2019-12, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled with ordinance levying tax on property subjects to tax in the city of Barstown, fixing rates thereon and designating the funds and purposes for which expenditures are authorized for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
And ask our city.
And ask our city attorney to read it in full.
Yes, thank you, council.
Here you are.
Ordinance number B 2019-12, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled, an ordinance levying tax on property subject to tax in the city of Barstown, fixing rates thereon and designating the funds and purposes for which expenditures are authorized for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. The city council of the city of Barstown, Kentucky is hereby ordained as follows. Number one, that there be and hereby is levied a sum of .1790 cents on each $100 of real property subject to taxation, the sum of .1790 cents on each $100 of personal property subject to taxation, the sum of 24 cents on each $100 of motor vehicle and water craft subject to taxation in the city of Barstown for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Number two, all monies hereafter collected for taxes due for the year 2019 through 2020 and all years prior thereto shall be allocated to the general fund for the general expenses of city government, including but not limited to recreation, police, and fire protection, general government, and the maintenance of streets and highways. Number three, collection of property tax bills of $10 or less may be waived by the chief financial officer. Number four, all taxpayers whose taxes are not paid by the last day of October or by the 30th day after the mailing of the tax bill, whichever is later, shall pay a penalty of 10% of the amount of taxes due and unpaid, and in addition thereof, shall pay interest on the unpaid taxes at the rate of 1% per month or part thereof until paid. Number five, 2% convenience fees levied on any credit card transaction payment of property tax bills. This ordinance shall be in full force upon its publication in all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict or hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict.
Councilman, you, Councilwoman, you heard the ordinance read, B 2019-12, and I, and motion to approve?
So moved, sir.
Motion made by Councilman Buckman to approve ordinance B 2019-12. Could be the second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hart. All in favor, we'll take another individual vote, start here with Councilman Donalds.
Aye.
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 Motion carried six zero, this will go into effect as soon as publication of all. Thank you very much. I'm going to skip down here to the new business here. We've got a resolution, September is obviously, has been designated as the city government month and where is, you know, we haven't heard from our, a new city clerk since he's been on the job officially. Would you like to read a resolution in Tuesday, 2019-08 authorizing the American Plain Month to be received?
I most certainly would. Resolution R 2019-08, a resolution authorizing the mayor to proclaim the month of September 2019 as city government month. Whereas civics education in Kentucky schools is important to ensure future generations are engaged and involved in their local community and its governance, and whereas elementary schools are a prime location for the introduction of local government principles and responsibilities, and whereas involving and informing students of local government programs and duties can provide an opportunity for entire families to connect with vital city services and programs, and whereas there are 416 cities in Kentucky and 55% of the state's population lives in the city. And whereas city government month is a civics awareness campaign that educates elementary school students about city services by providing teachers' lessons plans and coloring activity book and an implementation guide. And whereas city government month calls on city officials to get involved in their local schools and in educating and engaging elementary school students in city government. And whereas the KLC Board of Directors has declared September 2019 as city government month in Kentucky, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby designate September 2019 as city government month. Be it further resolved that city officials and employees are encouraged to collaborate with local elementary schools to educate students about their city government and to engage them in city services.
I'm sure some, I'm sure several council people have already visited their city grade schools and elementary schools and read to students and claimed all the good things that happened, right, Councilman Hart?
I have, yes, sir.
Councilman Williams, he's authority on that too, he does it every day, so.
Good.
So we just basically need to approve their resolution, then meeting first and second reading. Would you like to make a motion to?
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution R 2019-08 city government month.
No, for the, no.
Like a second, then.
Second by Councilman Donalds. Motion made by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Donalds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like side, thank you. Okay, we have a mobile food vendor application that you have before you. I looked over this too, Billy Bob's Barbecue. Gary, does everything else fit in? I didn't see a picture of the, I see the liability, well, I didn't have the liability insurance the other day, but okay. Last week you didn't have all of it.
Yeah, we updated that as he provided the materials there, so he should have everything that's required.
I didn't see it last, right. Everything's in order?
Yes, he has a business license, the certificate of insurance with the city of Barstown, has the official insured, he's attached his photos, I think that takes care of it. He's got a statewide permit too, his mobile health department.
Only thing that I didn't see the other day was his certificate of insurance and the picture of his National Department and his unit, so it looked like it's in order. Anybody else have any questions about that? Not, everything's in order. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the mobile food vendor application for Billy Bob's Barbecue.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Hibs.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hart to approve Billy Bob's Barbecue. No further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like side, thank you. Other staff reports, committee reports. Our HR director, Mr. Asworth, you had something you wanted to bring forth before the council?
Yes, Mayor Shekels, thank you. I'd like to take a moment to address a couple of social media posts that surfaced last night that have to do with the city of Barstown removing or targeting the support for Crystal Rogers signs that are throughout, you know, our city limits. I want to assure the Valor family and the public that no one within the city limits or no one within the city of Barstown organization is removing these signs. We, we have a new ordinance enforcement officer and she's doing a great job. She's very proactive, she's very hardworking over her last two weeks. And if you remember, we haven't had a dedicated enforcement officer since March of last year, so it's been over a year. I've tried doing some of it and Gary's tried doing some of it, and of course you can imagine along with the rest of our duties, we fell woefully short of keeping up with all of our ordinances, enforcing those, the code enforcement ordinances and all the ordinances, to include the sign ordinances. And she's been very proactive going out and picking up signs that are in the right of way, getting with businesses who are in violation of the sign ordinances as far as those, you know, signs that are promoting their business and things of that nature. But at no time have she or anybody else within the city of Barstown removed any of the support for Crystal Rogers signs. We may have asked them to move them out of the right of way, you know, so if they were in the right of way, we would ask a business owner or property owner to move them out of the right of way, but we did not take them from that property and bring them up here to the city of Barstown and throw them in a dumpster or put them anywhere else. We just, you know, we've not removed those signs at all. And if they're being removed, it's not by anybody that's in the city of Barstown organization. We just asked them to move them out of the right of way. We don't actually physically remove them from the property. And there was a couple of social media posts last night that, you know, brought on a lot of phone calls and everything this, all day long, so I wanted to address that to council meeting, that the city of Barstown and nobody within this organization are targeting those signs or removing those signs from anybody's property. And that's all, thank you, Greg.
I think you made it quite clear. Okay, any council member comments or?
Along with city government month, we are, the city council and city of Barstown is sponsoring an essay contest for the third through the fifth graders in the schools that are in the city limits, which includes Barstown Elementary, St. Joseph Elementary, and Foster Heights. I reached out to the principals at all three schools and the subject, the theme for the essay is what it means to me to be a member of our community. So I hope that we get a lot of great entries and some good judges to help read those over. And then the mayor has agreed that once we select a winner, we'll bring that young man or woman to a city council meeting and recognize them.
Will you just have one winner or will you have one per question?
One winner.
Okay. One winner per school or just one winner?
One winner.
Okay. That's good, that's good.
We get a lot of essays, I want some help from everybody to judge those.
That's, that's a good, that's a good idea. You'll be surprised how many good essays you'll probably get out of this.
I want to hear it. We might even get some good ideas.
Yeah, sure. The annual Kentucky Legal Cities Convention will be held in Covington, Kentucky, September 24th through 27th. I don't know if any of you members have decided whether to go or participate, but it's always the only information that you can get at the conference and we're looking forward to having everyone there in the city.
So we're the guest speaker, the main guest speaker, I guess, is about downtown development, so that'll be interesting for us to maybe get some new ideas for our downtown.
We're having a board and directors meeting on the T Z, early, before the opening ceremony.
Well, the city council that night too, morning.
What is that, council meeting? But I won't be able to present over that one.
Well, that's going to be my next question, will we have enough council members in order to have a meeting?
I'm not. You're not going there?
No.
I'm not.
We'll have it done.
That's on the 24th, you concerned about?
It'll be the 24th, yes. Okay, well, good deal. Sure the mayor, who does it, we're real close. Cemetery, if anyone else have any comments, anything you want to make, before we're cutting Mike short. We have cemetery deeds, we have two deeds for Mary schooling for two graves. No objection, that will approve those by unanimous consent. Any other announcements, other say? Chief Manley, Chief Presley?
Mr. Peck?
It'll be in order, Mayor. If anybody wants to say after this meeting to talk about the bar, extended bar hours, I'd like to talk to members of council.
What about?
Just ask them if it's a dead issue, if it's coming back, that sort of thing, because the bourbon festival coming up and other festivals as well.
He might like to, he might like to spend, you missed him, Mr. Randy Patrick. If there's no other further business, all the councilmen, I'll entertain a motion to put it there.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Buckman?
Second.
Second on the Councilman Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like second. Meeting is adjourned. prepare. So motion made by Councilman Buckland?
Second.
Second, on the Councilman Hart? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second. Meeting is adjourned.